I just.
So, I wanna know what's behind, what's behind all of these criminal activities? And, and if you guys getting pulled over by the police just for a small speeding ticket, all of you suddenly get out of the vehicle and open fire? Wha- what's the reason?
Can I give you a reason?
Okay.
Hang on, hang on, wait, 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 can I go?
One at a time.
Alex, it's trucker Bill. Alex, it's trucker Bill here.
Alright, trucker Bill, speak, everybody be quiet.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to know why you feel as a police department, uh, it's okay to drive around with four or five unarmed guys in one car busting everyone for any small misdemeanor crime, jumping out and just, uh, you know, we don't, we don't know if you guys are, uh, are, are cops or what, it just seems like you're trying to catch us out constantly. Uh, how come you guys aren't all in uniform texting us from a sand mining? Uh, it just seems you're all interested in your good work.
Are you referring to the detective unit?
Yeah, the shooting.
We're just having meetings if you wanna join us.
I always say why. Because of the past week, everybody has been going at crimes, killing police officers. And it's really hard for, it's really hard for the sheriff's office to, to stop that. And, and the benefit to become unmarked with no uniform is to get these people that are trying to kill the police officers.
Okay.
Alright, I got, I got a question for some.
What's your name? What's your name?
I think the reason why we're killing all these cops and stuff is because gun prices are too high, man. I, I mean like, you know, once you get to eighteen and that's.
God, man.
Why would you need, why would you need guns? Why would you need guns?
Why?
Officer, my name is Ryan Fabers.
Yeah? The friend that protect our property.
Protection. How would you guys feel, alright, alright, listen up. How, how would you guys feel?
Okay, continue talking.
All of the police officer would be, would be called, they would know, they would be get out of their vehicle without weapons and give you a small speeding ticket if they catch you speeding.
I think you need some help.
Can you please fucking let me out?
Please. What's your problem?
Officer, it seems that all of us have warrants out because the detective unit's got so large, all of us are wanted for something. So, we don't wanna risk our name being on the wanted list and or a warrant for our arrest, so we don't wanna risk anything.
This, this is Fred Collison, can I add something really quick?
Yes.
Uh, can we get this guy with the hot mic to just, to stop? Please, right now?
Where is he?
My fucking ears are gonna explode. Okay, and also, hey, a- also, come on dude, please stop hot mic, I'm gonna fucking shoot myself.
Which one is it?
This guy right in front of me.
Giddy, giddy, this guy, A.J. Rock.
This guy right here.
And the ghillie suit?
No, right here.
No, A.J. Rock, this guy, this guy. No, 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 this is it, that's me.
Yeah, just put him somewhere else, man, that's bad.
Don't worry about it.
Hey, listen up dude, uh, whenever, okay, so, this is my perspective, I'm not speaking for anybody else when I say this. I know I've caused a lot of crime and I've done a lot of stupid shit and I just do it out of fun, okay? I'm gonna put that out there real quick. Alright, so, whenever I get pulled over, uh, it's like, a lot of times I'm carrying illegal shit, okay? So, when the officer comes up and pulls me out of the car for just a simple speeding ticket, he goes full force and searches and does a bunch of crazy stuff. So, automatically, the next time, the next time I fucking get pulled over and I got illegal stuff on me, man, it's just common sense. Like, I ain't gonna pull over for this guy, I'm gonna fucking run. And my chances of running and getting away from the cop are much greater than me just, just getting out of the car and getting the pink fuzzy handcuffs thrown on my wrist. And then I go to prison for like three hours, so, I mean, I'm not, I'm not speaking for anybody else. I'm fucking speaking from my own perspective, this is what's happened.
Can I reply to that, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
I complete respect of the reason why you do it, I, I mean, if I was in your position, I would do the same. But, uh, the reason the cops search you is because you're wearing the rebel gear and probably a mask. Now, if you would just wear the normal civilian clothing and put your illegal vest, vest whatsoever in your vehicle, uh, they would, they had, they had no reason to search you then. They would, they would just give you a ticket and you're gonna go.
I watch your ribs.
I understand that, but sometimes, sometimes we wanna have fun with the cops, right? Like, I, I, and again, I'm just be, speaking from my own perspective here. Uh, I'll use one, uh, I'll use one example. I'm driving down the street and I'm screaming Star Wars at the top of my lungs. I get pulled over and immediately pulled out of the car and searched, which I can understand why the officer would do that. Because I was kinda driving a little erratically and stuff and he could've thought I was under the influence. But, I mean, it just jumps straight to searching and searching of the vehicle. And, I mean, I would love to RP with the cops and I try to all the time. But, it, it just turns into a shit show, so it leaves the civilians at, at a point where we just wanna, we get defensive right off the bat and we just, or offensive, and then we just, we fucking kill dudes, so.
I'll go. We water. Shut up, let the officer speak.
Now, some of the departments might not do the whole identify thing, ask them how they're doing, where they're headed, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But I think as a, as a group here at, at the Lakeside Dodge Sheriff's Office, that we need to push for more of that. So, it doesn't just jump to.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would agree with you.
I mean, I agree with your sense.
It honestly makes a sour taste in their mouth after their first battle interaction and they're like, well, this.
Turns out, you're right, it's fine. They let him go or something, I don't know. Yeah.
Hey, my, my name's Officer Stevenson. And actually, you know, we don't have a right to search you, if we're just giving you a speeding ticket, man, we have no right to search you at all unless we get, unless we're given right. And if someone else is doing that, I mean, just pulling you out and searching you for no reason, I think that's, yeah, that's not right at all.
Yes.
I have something to say, okay? Yeah, a solution.
Officer Stevenson, am I wrong that the majority of us are wearing clothing that gets us searched whenever we're seen?
Yeah, I mean, that is.
Let's be honest.
Can I say something real quick?
If I could say something to add to the, the clothing thing, which was, uh, if, if most of, most people, like, if I pull them over and they're like, you know, generally a nice person or something, I might overlook something like the clothing. If they're not like yelling like, you know, obscenities and things at me, I might, you know, let them go and take their baby.
How about the time where I got hit by an officer's car and you guys arrested me out there?
You know, sorry, sorry.
That's like GTA five.
Real quick, real quick.
James Lawson. What? James Lawson said for permission to speak, sir.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go on. You know, wha- what makes police above us stay speed? We can't, but they can, you know? Cause they get one easy shot.
If you see any officer speeding without their lights and sirens on, you go to the sheriff's office complaint section and report that motherfucker because he will get fired.
And they will get detained for trespassing.
And I'd better submit all my video and share. Here's my problem.
Hey, guys, I got a solution, please.
My problem with the speeding is most of the time I'm going thirty, which means in town. I don't wanna sit there with no car and stranded wherever the fuck I am, so most of the time I just don't stop.
Why not raise the street limit? Why not raise it to ninety outside of town?
Cause people can't drive for shit.
Well, they should. Can I, can I bring up?
After two hours of playing here, you drive down the Bortham Highway, how many fucking cars do you see crashing to the side?
Seven.
Uh, well. Alex. Alex, it's trucker Bill.
You know what?
Hey.
Hey, hey, you know what?
I have something, I have some, I have a.
Can I just say, can I just say?
Excuse me, excuse me, I have something to say. Yo, get back down the barrier, this is. Hey, hey.
No. Can I just, can I just say something?
Hey, hey.
Yo, stop it.
Yo, I, I. I have something very important to address.
Yeah.
Oh my god, you gotta shut up, man.
I don't stop eating your bike. Yeah, can I just say something real quickly? This, this is gonna end up, this is gonna end up with being a shitstorm if we go on about individual things. It's about the bigger picture here, so let's fucking forget about your one, one-time story of how someone failed. And, and more about the general picture.
I got a question about the value of life.
Hey, can Fred Collison have one more thing, guys, just one thing?
Yes.
Listen, I would love, I would love to RP the shit, uh, with you guys and really have a good community here. I kinda feel like you guys are, uh, you guys are kinda the leaders, uh, of the community cause you have to lead by example and you have expectations and stuff like that that, you know, that you, you, you have to follow rules, I know we do as well, but civilians aren't tied down by professionalism. So, what I wanna see, and I think a huge solution would, would be to fix this issue, is if the os-, uh, if the osophers would fucking get out of Lakeside and you guys would actually set up sectors down in Morrison Town and you guys wouldn't roll around in your fucking cars all the time and you go out on foot patrols and actually treat people with common courtesy. Like, just get out and know peo-, get to know people on a personal level and fucking talk to them. I think it would help, I didn't say it was, I didn't say it was an end-all solution, it would help though.
Guys, guys, listen. Because the cops, they don't care for the civilians and I completely agree with you that. Six months ago, there was police station and NSO and everybody cared for each other. There were indeed foot patrols and every, everybody spoke to each other. And most of the, majority of the police officers knew the criminals, but it, it was better. But now, I'm sure nobody knows who you guys are. I mean, some of you are known to me, but most of you guys, I don't know. And that's because I don't get the chance to talk to you guys, I don't get the chance to give you a speed ticket and.
Uh, I don't.
You know, like Alex, like Alex said, you know, I, you know, Officer Stevenson, I think I treat everyone with respect, anyone that's interacted with me, you know, and, uh, you know, if I go to go help someone with a toolkit along the side of the road, cause we're here to protect and serve, okay? Some guy comes up and knocks me out from behind and kidnaps me every time, it kinda makes me, kinda makes it hard for me to stop, you know?
Yes.
Well, okay, listen.
Unfortunately, all officers just, all someone out to speak, okay, Mahone, fucking do your job.
Hey, Mr. Bedano, let's ask you a question, huh?
Go ahead, Mr. Bedano.
You talk about professionalism, you talk about the way the cops act. I get cops roll past me saying things like turbo Shrek and butt hurt and shit like that. And trying to act like motherfuckers.
I thought you, I thought. Alex, can I answer this? Generally, guys, if you have a fucking problem with an officer and you think he's acting above the law or not how the, well, basically, A three O runes, rules dictate, record that shit and post it on the forums. We have moderators and admins who fucking survey that shit twenty-four seven. They'll get deported, cleanse, one problem less, continue.
May I?
I have something.
May Laborio Belomo?
At where?
It's not, it's not this specific incident I'm talking about, it's, it's a general lack of professionalism across the board.
Well, now, the lens, the fucking SO, I mean, they have applications open al- almost every second week, am I right?
Alright. I, I, I thought this was a correction off food right now, we don't, uh.
Well, that beauty is maybe later. Generally, if someone's on a mission over. I have, I have an other thing. Okay.
Mister Mahone, may Laborio Belomo please ask a question or make a statement.
What, whatever.
You're not Laborio. So, I, I honestly think, I honestly think the biggest issue with the, uh, the whole police officer situation is that I feel like, from my previous experiences, that the police don't really value their lives as much as the civilians and rebels do. Like, for example, we'll be driving a convoy of a bunch of, we'll be driving a convoy of a bunch of players, obviously all armed. Like, I'm talking about thirty people and like two cops will try to pull us over. Like, they have, uh, like, they don't value their lives. Like, if we do a bank robbery, right, without hostages, even if we're eight men and are fully armed, the cops are gonna push in and try to shoot us, like, they don't value their lives.
We're gonna talk about bank negotiations by all means, but the, the, the demands you're asking, it's ridiculous. We can't give you.
I'm not saying they're mad, I'm just, I'm just saying that the, I believe the.
Well, then, make your trip for money. Mahone, Officer Mahone.
Make sure, guys, can I add you up to this topic? I have something to say.
Guys, please, please, who said that they can answer that?
Oh, let me, let, 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 let.
I have something to say, and I think it was.
Let's say on this topic.
Guys, you're talking about cops robbing and stuff like that. Now, I've been there maybe two and a half, three months. Oh, I've, I've sat down. I've sat down and I've talked with Alex and I've talked with Don and I've talked with other guys, uh, about the role play with the cops. Situations in the bank, there are situations with hostages. And basically, we've had, in their defense, they haven't listened to me. And they have pulled me into one or two meetings with their heads of departments in the sheriff and PD and they've talked to them. So, hopefully, stuff will start to get better in the role play. And I know those like listed demands and stuff like that are, are completely off the wall, like. So, don't, you shouldn't be asking for stuff that's completely off the wall.
Yes, I'm not, I wasn't generally talking about the whole bank statement as in with the hostage, I'm just saying that. Yeah, I know, I, I just feel like the police really don't, like, they don't go through spending nine hundred thousand dollars on weapons for their whole crew and buying all the vehicles, they don't go through that, like, they don't value their lives as much as the players do. So, they really don't mind if they die, they know that they're gonna get revived. Hopefully, that new medic system where there's actually a limit to.
They're supposed to protect this, man.
The boy. I have something to add to your point.
Yes, what would you like?
Um, well, basically, what I have to say to this point is that people, the cops seem to not really value the lives of their, their own lives.
Exactly.
Their colleagues or civilians. Some points that might confirm this are the fucking SOPs dictate fifteen K for a hostage that's civilian and the double for an LEO. Now, apart from that being disrespectful to civilians, I've always witnessed this on multiple occasions, without naming any names right now, that cops go fully lethal on cars that evade with over fifty percent of the passengers.
Guys, I'm gonna be honest, I feel like we're not on topic or anything, like, they're thinking. I'm looking for a plan.
Lethal force, please, sir.
Lethal force is never authorized if you're evading the police, unless, listen up, unless you're showing a danger to civilians. For example, you're in a city going hundred twenty kilometers per hour, almost running somebody over. This is the point where an officer has the right to shoot at his tires. If you then don't stop driving, they have fully rights to shoot on you, they have to fight, you take it out. That's because you're showing a threat. If you're out of nowhere, like outside of prison, like in a dirt road, like you're nowhere and you're evading and you're not showing anybody harm, we have no right to shoot at you, we have no right, we have to continue the chase and try to refresh.
Okay.
Officer, Alex.
The cops.
Hey, shut the fuck up, dude. Jesus Christ, if you don't shut the fuck up, I'm gonna shoot you where you stand. If you guys wanna dick around, leave, fucking leave. If you wanna better the community, then stay here. But if you wanna act like a fucking kid, kick rocks.
I, I organized this hearing so I could talk to you guys and freaking find a solution because it's dogshit right now.
Fucking escorting those people who will talk.
And, and.
Can you just go right?
If you see somebody using lethal force and you think it shouldn't be happening, we have a special complaint section and only I and the D two command deal with it. And I'll promise you, I fired more than three people because they fucked up. I don't defend the police, I don't defend civilians, I'm neutral. That's what I'm trying to say here, I'm trying to make this community better.
I would like to ask the president a question.
Officer, checking, Mr. Stevens, speak.
Can I make an up, can I make a suggestion?
Alex, I never got your opinion on that statement though.
We're talking about the forums, okay? We're talking about putting complaints up in the forums. While any incident that has to do with an RDM on a cop doesn't get reviewed by admins who are cops.
Alright, that's a good plan.
Can you repeat that question, please, Laffey?
Okay.
That's far.
Well, I'm at the other. If there is a case of a player complaint in the forum, it's a result of an RDM on a cop, that any of the admins dealing with it are not cops because you find that the guys that comment on the complaints and the banned requests on a cop are cops and the community feels that it's been biased towards them.
That's why we are, we're getting more civilian administrators so they can have a look at it. And if you think that somebody has not been banned when it, he should have been and then police unbanned him or whatever closed the case, then you should go to higher up and report it because that shouldn't happen. I didn't think, I didn't think.
Oh, they're kind of in D and D channels all day long.
What I'm saying, Alex, is that, that no admin that's a cop comment or push a player complaint up to a banned request. That if you're a cop and you're an admin, you cannot review a complaint that involves a cop. That it has been completely outside of the, that's what I'm saying.
We actually see admins, all of civs or EMS, we have a few admin compos, we have a head admin who's playing both cops and civs apparently, what he said. So, we don't have that many cops that are biased, that's just your opinion on the same, like, thing, like, it's not, it's actually not.
But if we wanna do that, if we wanna say that.
I, I've seen cop admins kick and permaban other cops, okay?
Very rare, though.
Yeah, but if we're gonna go like that, we're just gonna go around in circles, we're never gonna get anywhere.
Why don't we start thinking of solutions?
Issue itself, it's just imagination is limited in some people's minds. We can do so much more, but people in ways they want to do the easy shooting. And also, it's a death issue, we can fix shit until we're supposed to do some adding stuff for us to do.
Yes, but right now we're talking about the things that we can fix as people. And if my question was to get the opinion on do cops value their lives as much as they should, according to.
Where's the goal of protecting and serve? We need to put our lives in danger to help civs and, and put ourselves in different risks.
Not answering the question, you keep walking away from it.
Yeah, that, you're right.
You're bashing on the bush up there.
The value, the value of a cop's life can improve.
So, pointing fingers, websites do bad stuff.
Yes, I, I know.
On the other hand, we take actions and kick those people o- out of the force.
Yes, that's all I'm saying, uh, Alex, I do, I do understand what you're saying and whoever else is speaking, I agree that there are times where it is realistic for cops to push in on the front lines and just go for it because they do need to risk their lives for the protection of others. Right, but in some situations, like, they, they, I've seen it, they, people act as if they do not care if they die because they know that they're just gonna be.
I know why, I know why, okay?
We need to surrender more.
Can I add just two points here, let, and I don't, again? I'm just gonna speak from my own perspective, um, I kinda feel like the cops don't, they don't have anything to lose versus civilians. It takes us a lot of work to get our weapons and our gear. And the question is, you guys are asking, why are we jumping out of the car and shooting cops up? Cops don't have anything to lose, we have a shit ton of time and effort that we put in to our, into our lives in this, in the, in what we're doing.
Exactly.
And, and, you know, the cost, and as of right now, guns are hundreds of thousands of dollars. And especially when the, the new patch comes out, it's gonna be even worse because it's, it, from what I understand, it's gonna take a week or so to craft a weapon. So, it could even, it could even get worse. Cops don't have much to lose, civilians do, and that, and that's why we're running into this issue.
We are sheriff's office, we're here, we're founded by a government. When was the last time I went off duty as a civ to enjoy my, my money I made in the comp force to spend it on civ stuff? Uh, I can't remember.
That point's irrelevant, what the fuck is up?
Yes.
Yeah, what are you talking about?
You guys make more money than I.
I'll, uh.
You need to be the fucking best amazing role player ever and most people aren't comfortable enough to roleplay during your life.
That's nothing about roleplay.
Sitting in front of the computer and screaming for your wife because you only want.
Right.
You know, it's a roleplay, it's just about the fact that we have to work our ass.
But it's not, it's not. That's semi-speaking, but it's not. And assault rifle for us. Motherfucker, we, we have to pay like a hundred ninety K for our rifles, what the cops have to pay for their assault rifle.
Eight thousand.
Fifty fucking K and you wonder why we just.
Yeah, guys, can I, can I just say something? The, the police are meant to be, the, the, guys, the, the police are meant to be, uh, geared up by, they can't be going around with no rifles and no things like that, it's just make it.
Yeah, it's gonna.
So, so, they, they have to. Yo, guys, let me talk, let me talk, let me talk for a second, okay? There's, there's, um, like, they have to have these sort of facilities where they can get things for cheaper. Us saying, oh, I, I do agree that it's, we have to pay a little bit too much and that's part of the reason why I think to myself, okay, no matter how good my, uh, uh, sometimes, I've had some really good experience recently with roleplay, so I, I'm not gonna shit talk anything because it's been okay, but, uh, as soon as my AK gets seen, like, it's fucking straight off me, like, I, I was pulled over by five, uh, impact, okay, I'm not gonna go down that. But, um, uh, that's my worry, a- a- as soon as I'm driving around, now, this is my only way of protecting this kevlar vest. This is classed as rebel, uh, clothing. Now, this is my only form of protection, if I get robbed or anything like that, um, I've got no way of protecting myself, so I wear this. Now, if I hide my AK in it, you have a right to search me, so I just think, fuck that, you know what? I'm not letting you anywhere near me because that's the first thing that you're gonna wanna do is look inside my vest and just because I, I'm, I'm wearing this. So, I think if, if you really wanna stop people wearing these clothes that we've all got, you need to make some sort of, uh, protection for, for people who just wanna go out and not get stabbed, you can.
I agree.
Also, the fact, the fact that the police are always presenting their arms accelerates our aggression because you'll see cops walking around with fucking machine guns, what the fuck, they're walking around in the middle of town, that's gonna scare everybody. If we.
That.
If, yeah.
Can, can, guys, 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 gonna press.
If I, if I get pulled over.
Because I think this is not going anywhere right now, guys.
So, I can.
I'm talking about costs, I wanna ask the president a question, right? President, can I ask you a question?
Let me, let me, please, just. Yeah, you can ask me a question after this, I would just like to make some general points here. So, basically, I've been listening to all of you guys right now and there's been a lot of blame on either side. But I think that the main problem here is that, in fact, the crime rate is rising exponentially and many civilians that were law-abiding citizens at first felt sick and tired of being robbed all the time. So, they decide to take rights into their own hands and buy themselves protection, which such as an AK, such as a vest, so they can protect themselves. Basically, what I'm trying to do here and what the SO is trying to do is actually reduce crime, but as you are seeing, that is not working as of right now because of several reasons.
Clearly.
The one reason being that currently the government is not able to control its assets as it should have been in zero point four. So, we're actually waiting for zero point four to arrive so we can actually effectively control both the weapons trade and the black market. The second point would be that currently we have a plan that was drafted up together with the SO. In this plan, Lakeside is actually divided into four zones, which will be patrolled by several patrol cars. There will also be checkpoints at key locations, which means that civilians that actually want to do an honest living, that actually want to do the sand runs will not be robbed every five, every like ten minutes for five times a day. So, basically, what would happen is if you enter this checkpoint, you would be searched for illegal goods. If you don't want to be searched, you just turn back.
This would mean that.
Here's the thing, alright? Here's your thing, Mr. President, now, hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm your speaker. We do organize crime as a fun form of roleplay, not because we don't need to rob people to survive, I think you're getting that twisted. The roleplay we had at the bridge earlier was fun, was it not?
That was the best roleplay I think many of us have ever seen.
That involved shutting down the bottom half of the map, but this is what you're complaining about.
No, no, don't get, don't get me wrong, I understand that crime needs to be a necessary element of this because if there was no crime, there would be no need for the SO, there would be no need for the government. You all, all of you would just be running around freely doing whatever you like. I understand the need for crime, but you also must understand that in reality, it is not meant for you guys to be as organized as this. So, well, actually, that's not, that's not.
What? Let me make a point, okay, guys, um, you know, what I'm looking at is it's cops versus robbers. I mean, if you guys are gonna roleplay, I mean, I would get gangs and have gang war, I mean, it's just cops versus robbers, not stuff.
You're obviously not informed, cause we do, and it's placed on the floor, and there's official gang posts.
Okay, guys, we're going, I feel like we're going back, backwards again.
Yeah, we're going back.
I, I, I wanna go forwards right now, and this is what, this is what I gotta say, if me and my buddy, uh, Nico Alexander kinda have a solution to this, and, uh, it would start off with more events, uh, like legal events on the behalf of the president and the government that need to be hosted on Lakeside to reduce the crime. I feel like right now, we're kinda bored as, uh, criminals, there's, there's not much to do, nobody's really trying to do sand. So, to have fun, we, we do criminal activities. But if you guys had hosted more events where we could actually all come together peacefully and not shoot each other all day long, we could have a damn good time at Lakeside, you know what I mean? You guys are still, you guys are really lacking.
You know what?
Cause a cop.
I tell you, no, 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 no.
See, we do, see, we do do that ourselves, but we do in a criminal way. And that's why we need you guys as the government. Okay, see, we do, see, we do do that ourselves, but we do in a criminal way, and that's why we need you guys as the government.
Why?
Today?
It's, it's kinda, it's kinda hard to do, and I'm just, eh, I'm not blaming the cops, alright, that's not what I wanna do here. I think RPing with the cops has been a lot of fun for me, um, since I've been in this mod, and I really appreciate it. Uh, it's especially with the civilians, I do appreciate you guys, no matter how many times I've killed you, or you've killed me. Um, but, just hitting on the point of, uh, hosting our events, I've had multiple weddings, uh, multiple weddings. And, it, it's a huge hosted event, we've had them at the Mirage, we've had them on top of skyscrapers. But the law enforcement shows up and it ju- it just goes south so fast. Um, and I don't know if anybody here has been at those weddings, but it goes, it goes south. And again, I'm not trying to blame you guys, I think the, and, and there's one more point I wanted to make, and then I'll shut up for the rest of the meeting. Uh, the sectors is a really good idea, and that's kinda what I was pushing for myself. But you gotta be, you're walking a thin line on that one, if you're setting up checkpoints and there's mandatory searches through those checkpoints, that's a sign of aggression. And you might have people coming up on your checkpoint trying to take those officers out. So, if you guys would consider it, like, if a vehicle pulled up and it was suspicious, then yeah, check it, but be friendly, you know what I mean? Go on foot patrols, get to know the community, don't always be a sign of aggression.
That, that's, that's the idea with the zones, though, uh, I don't know what your name is, but yeah, I'll just address you right now.
Fred.
That, yeah, Fred, so, basically, the zones are actually meant to be crime-free, so anyone that wants to enter the zone should be subjected to a search. And I do agree with you that that should happen in a polite manner, and that is why also, I'm giving the people that don't want to be searched, because they might have illegal stuff, and they have a chance to turn back without repercussions. I just want to realize, make you guys realize that within these zones, crime or just any illegal goods will not be tolerated, so if you're found with them, you will be charged. But basically, that's what happens in daily situations as well, you will not be walking into certain areas with weapons on you, you will not be walking in certain areas with illegal goods on you, you must understand that.
So, what you're saying is we're gonna increase our fun by restricting our rights, is that correct?
No, 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 that's not exactly what you're saying, that's what sounded like, no.
Uh, question, hold up, hold up, hold up, everybody be quiet, be quiet, I have a question, to all of you. Would you be, would you pull your vehicle over and actually interact with a police officer and take the speed ticket? If we would remove the SOP for us, that if you're wearing rebel clothing, you would be searched?
Fuck yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Will you be reducing all the crime that's been happening?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I don't think that, I don't think that, I don't think that.
No, 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 I, I don't think it works, bro, I don't think it-
Hold on, hold on, the, the fact that they're coming out also and presenting weapons does, the fact that they're getting out of their cars presenting assault rifles is also another thing that scares us and, like, accelerates our aggression so fast, like, so quickly, so-
If I can speak for a second?
You, you never see a cop pull up, pull somebody over in real life with an assault rifle out, with just normal traffic stuff.
We have cops walking around, weapons in their trucks, and then once they actually are necessary, the officers can go back and pull out their weapons.
I wanna talk for the first time, every time I put a weapon in the back of my vehicle, such as N4, someone walks up and takes it.
And then burn it.
Backpack, dude, put your backpack.
They get against certain rules.
Alex, very quickly, I, I, I'm gonna stop talking after this, but there's just two things, so what about you said? The first one is that, um, the one thing that I, I really don't like getting close to any of you cops, and I'll shoot you before you get close enough, is because of this function where it's okay to just be able to very quickly take me out of any sort of combat problem. Nobody interrupt me for a second, so if I'm, if I'm just stood there having a chat, it's like, it's like a sneaky move, and all of a sudden, I'm, 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 cannot fight back in any way. And, um, I find it time and time again that if I am hostile, uh, people come up to me and they'll- Yeah, yeah, well, not necessarily, it would be because-
Yeah, it's the mechanic, that you don't like roleplay.
The mechanic, that you can just click a couple buttons and we're gonna tap, no, it's fair.
Like, we just can't do that anymore, we can't just walk up to five people and, and put them in cuffs within, within five seconds, that, that's a, that's a rule, that-
But the, the least thing, I, I think what you need to do is, is declare your intention to, uh, for them to, to be somehow, uh, like, can you, uh, can you turn around for me, please, sir? Something like that, uh, because just coming up to me, if you tried to put my hand in, I, I'd punch you or something in real life, that's, that's, like, if I really wanted to. But coming up to me and, and you basically give me no way of being able to fight back, and I'm not saying I won't fight back all the time, sometimes I want to go to jail. Yeah, sometimes I wanna go to jail, because it, it's fun sometimes when the right people are in there, and that's another point. My final point, my final point, is that the jail needs to be more fun, okay? People will go to jail for thirty minutes if it's fun up there, but there's time and time again, I go up there because there's thirty cops on one server and three cops on the other. And I go up there, nobody's in the P D, and I just sit there and I A F pay it, so I think, you know what, I don't wanna go to jail, I, I'll risk myself, there's no medics on it. I know that I should be saying this, because it's out of, no, no, I'm not saying jail should be fun, but if you're sending, whoa, 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 one second. Of, okay, I'll stop talking straight away after this, um, I'm not saying it should be fun, but let's not forget, this is a game, and if you're going to make somebody sit in jail for three hours, you've got to let us do something, you've gotta make it somehow decent.
I agree, it is a game, and, and, because it shouldn't be fun, but then again, it shouldn't be the fucking thing where you have to sit around for three hours, I completely agree with you there.
Before we get to the topic about this is a game, think about it, we make the game, this community makes it.
Alex.
Yeah, but this isn't, we're not looking at this, like, everyone looks at it like, oh, give them jail time, it's, they need to be punished for what they did, like, they're gonna, like, real perspective, like, we're not supposed to be punished for playing the game, you know, like, if, if we're going to jail for a long time, then like, let's have the fun. We're not there to actually be miserable and waste of fucking lives, like, for real lives, sitting on-
Could, could I direct your attention to the forums, general discussions, general discussions at the forums? There is currently a sticky post right there about exactly this, uh, I think someone, someone posted it about like the, the feature to, um, the feature to like work or do something actually in prison. Uh, generally, everyone should actually frequent the forums way more often, there is a lot of stuff that gets extracted basically from there and implemented into the game by Zanzacaden and Zanazacaden and all the other devs. So, for, the forums are a great way to improve the community instead of this like, well, semi-cluster focused thing.
Yeah, the same goes for governmental decisions as well, there will be a lot of governmental laws that will be posted in the government section, so you guys can also check that out, and you will see that there is a lot of good ideas in there that will help you in the future. I mean, it's just a great place to post, like, and also up for things that, and express your opinion on other people's ideas and stuff, like, personally, today, I posted probably five new topics that, of ideas that we can implement into the server, and I want to get other people's opinions. So, it's always good to check out if they have these kinda things on there as well.
Yeah, true.
Like, since the, the dev issue we had, since the beginning, I've been fighting, like, trying to get, uh, like, I want it to be one hour to two hours, because it fucking sucks to be in jail. I feel bad for putting someone in jail if he's a nice guy for, for, for a long time, because he has to have all the charges.
But you still do it.
Fred down here, I like Fred, he's a good guy, if I had to put Fred in jail five hours, I feel like a douchebag.
Did you put that question aside?
Yeah, I mean, you do, I mean, good ideas, like concurrent, makes sense with concurrent.
Jared, why don't you, when you put someone, when you put someone in prison, Jared, right? It's fair enough to talk about the prison, that's acceptable, okay? But when you put them in there, you lock them in a cell, alright?
That's because they didn't have any power, when CSC was put in, uh, the correctional officers-
Put open the gates. No, Jared, you're not listening to me, please, Jared, let me-
No, it's cat, it's cat.
Okay, cat, let me finish, just let me finish, okay? When you put someone into prison, I can easily leave the gates in and on the compound open, so they can mix around with each other, that happens in prison.
Yeah, people won't be lying to themselves.
Give them, one second, guys, one second, give them yard time, put them out into the yard, I know the new, the new update's coming, why don't you make the yard in the new update with a net up over it, right? Like every other prison has around the world, to stop things coming in and stop people getting out, okay? But give them yard time, give them time in the compound, the only time that you lock them back up, if there's a jailbreak, you know? People get bored sitting in the affected cell, and then you get what you get on the forums with ban requests, they glitch out of the cell, boy, they glitch out of the cell doors. They glitch out for a reason.
Are you fucking serious?
They glitch out for a reason, because-
You understood that again, I will ban your ass, stop that.
They, they glitch out of the cells for a reason because they're fucking bored standing inside, and they're-
Location would be nice as well.
This comes back to another point, huh?
Yeah, that, that's the thing, when CSC was put in, the correctionals, cause like, it backfired, cause we couldn't, like, the medics couldn't really help people. When someone gets shot three times, it takes two to three minutes before the person dies and he respawns. So, CEOs didn't get any prisoners at all, they left, they started to stop playing. Now, CSC is gone, and they're working to fix that, so we actually have CEOs, last night was ten CEOs online and two cops. So, it's like, oh shit, we need to give them some people so they can afford, now with CEOs in, there will be more yard time, there will be more visitation, stuff like that. But most of the times, when you let someone out of the cell, it's like, oh, you got, has got, they run away, run up in the tower, jump off the tower and kill themselves.
Yeah, but made, you've made, you've made the front door of the prison, you've made the front door of the prison can only be blown to open it, right? Cops can access it that way, so what is stopping you making the yard game the same way that only cops can access it?
Well, after that, that's a dev issue, there's, a lot of these issues is dev issues, and sadly, we can't do anything about it. Uh, is there even a dev here to listen to this? No, it's not, so this feeling is like, fuck.
Completely fucking pointless.
Everyone calm down and let me fucking speak. I, I, I can shut the fuck up and let me speak, I've been stuck here for ten fucking minutes, and as you can tell, I'm a fucking old man. I need to use my blender, okay? I need to expel some urine. Is everyone okay with me taking a leak and coming back? Can we, can we postpone this for at least five seconds?
Go for it.
He's sure you're only gonna be five seconds?
Okay.
That's what you had to ask.
Hey, old man, you want some weed?
Everybody run away and hide, I'm thinking of it.
Old man, you want some weed?
Yeah, pass that shit.
Alex, I was gonna say.
Do you have food or water?
It is food or water, come to me, I'm sitting down, but on the slope, I'll give you some.
It's like, you wanted us to stop, damn, you wanted, you wanted crime to be-
We don't want you to stop with the crime, we don't want you to stop it.
Listen to-
There is crime, I just want you guys give us the ability to interact with you without being shot at.
You don't know that's gonna happen?
No, I, I, no, no, let me finish speaking, I understand that you guys fear for it, because every time you get pulled over and an officer sees with rebel clothing, they're gonna search you, and then you'll be in jail for three hours. So, I don't wanna promise anything, but I'm gonna speak with some higher commands, and maybe we'll get that shit lifted that if, if you're wearing rebel clothing, we don't have the ability to search you. Um, I'm not gonna promise on that, but if, if that is, if that's the main reason that you guys open fire at us, that you don't wanna get searched, then I'm-
It's because of the warning shots.
Can we, can we, wait, 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 I wanna make a point, uh- The officers being able to present weapons, like, of course.
Yo, let, let Brian finish, okay?
Hey, there's like, there's, there's like three reasons why people open fire first, one, the jail times are ludicrous, two, depending on their roleplay situation, they might not be the sort of character that gets pulled over. For example, myself, we run large organized crime, so as you well know, we're not gonna let you pull us over ever, we roleplay with you in a different way. We don't open fire first or, or that bullshit, we always initiate, I make sure people initiate all the time, and, you know-
That's fine, but let the officer have a chance to live and don't steal his stuff, I mean, fine, cause if not, over, steal his money, and then, you know, just-
You guys need to carry around prison garb or something, put on a orange suit so we know that you're surrendering.
You know what?
Like yesterday, we tried to get Craig to drop all his stuff, and he shoots us. We, we told him to drop all his stuff, he failed to do that, so we had to knock him out, or he would have turned and shot all of us.
I judge.
They're not, they don't value their lives.
Yes, I just, I just, I just ran into this.
Let, let's get rid of these bad fishes, report it, so we can get rid of those cops.
Hey, guys, we're going backwards again, we already went over this.
Question's turned.
President, I wanna know what you're gonna bring to Lakeside the next couple of weeks, cause we need something new, we need something that'll make us stop doing crime, I need, I need, I need a new- No, but like, the president could tell me what's up, like, I, I wanna know for me, president, cause, I, I wanna know what the president could do for me right now, cause if not, if you can't do anything for me, I'm gonna vote for somebody else next time around, maybe we're on a lottery or something like that, yeah?
Who the fuck voted?
Nobody did.
Even a paintball range or something, dude.
I'm tired of, I'm tired of talking about the cops, cause I feel like they're doing an adequate job in Lakeside right now, they're doing as much as they can, I mean, look at us, we're all criminals, we all got guns, we're shooting at them all day long, you know what I mean? Sometimes it's gonna be corruption, not every time it's gonna work out in their favor or in our favor, you know what I mean? So, it's just like, go easy on the cop, guys, I wanna know what the president has in store for us or not, because I feel like-
So, basically, right now, uh, the government is not able to do much because of dev issues. For example, uh, in the near future, with the reformation of the Lakeside economy, with the reformation of the matrix, there will be, uh, certain steps that the government can take, for instance, taxes that will be raised. We will also be able to fund the SO department, the medical department, and the other departments directly, so we can actually have some sort of check from them.
And the other department.
Yeah, the other departments, there are others.
Does that mean we're gonna be losing more money and they're gonna be getting more money?
So, we're losing more money, it's just-
No. Could you, could you please, could you please let me finish before you start making assumptions?
Yeah, I wanna hear the president.
So, basically, what will happen is that the taxes will be used to fund, but not only the departments, but also you. Basically, it has been discussed before in the forums that there will be certain funds that will be made available for people to actually do or want to do a law-abiding job. Because as you might realize, I cannot allow the funding of criminal organizations, because that will go against RP and that would go against my personal beliefs as well. So, basically, what will happen is your tax money will be used to fund initiatives, they will be used to fund RP events. But as of now, the funds are lacking, I am not able to cash in on tax, I'm not able to actually do anything organizational-wise. So, basically, my office right now is an empty shell because it does not have any in-game powers as of now, the only thing that, yeah, zero point four, that's exactly what we're waiting for, that we can actually do strings. But yeah, basically, what we have done up until now is actually laid the, uh, groundwork, we set up the secret service, we set up laws, we set up a constitution for you guys. We've also set up some, uh, some actually, some RP events that we'll be discussing in the future, but we need certain things to actually work for us first.
Yeah, well-
That's why I want you to talk about that.
Now. Hey, with, with, with-
There was an event the other week, or the other month, which everyone got involved in, where they were all, you know, the admins set up something where it was to do with the hoverboards, and we all had a race, and I mean, you had people who hated each other there. And everybody had a laugh, why can't you put more stuff like that into the game?
Yeah, recently, there was, um-
This will stop, but this will bring the crime down a hell of a lot.
Yeah, I understand that, recently, there was an event, there was a race on the racetracks, which was actually, uh, used to actually raise money for a charity event. Basically, what happened was people could subscribe to the event, they brought their cars, they could participate in several rounds, and the winner of each round could receive a prize. And that event actually raised four million dollars, and it was divided among eighty people that were currently on that server. So, basically, every person received like forty thousand or fifty thousand dollars from that event in their bank account, and I can tell you, it was the-
See, that's the thing, if you make us events, it's gonna keep our minds off criminal activity.
Yeah, exactly, I agree with-
The government, you guys, that's the government can do that, you don't need admins or devs, you guys can just start that up, man, as the president yourself, everybody's gonna come, if you say something, everybody's gonna come. Everybody's gonna come as the president, I don't even see you around enough, to be honest.
You don't have to be giving us, offering us money, you don't have to offer us compensation, we go for the fun, we go for the fun of having an RP event.
We'll, we'll go, and if I see that the president's coming, I'm gonna come, I'm gonna go there, I'm gonna show up and see what's up, you know? I'm, I'm not gonna shoot you or anything, cause I don't believe in assassinating the president, I mean, I don't have a, a reason to right now, I mean, maybe down, down the road when you screw up or something, but, you know, we'll get to that later. But, you know, you could, you could start that up, man, you know what I mean, you as the government, as the president, just start, start something, dude, you gotta be creative, man, it's what this community is about right now, it's about being creative.
There are, there are events gonna start up, and we are actually waiting to the twenty-sixth until the gray spirit is over, so that actually people could actually interact on a more professional level. Because I've received a lot of complaints recently that people, uh, are not able to assassinate me because of this gray spirit, so basically, every event will happen from the twenty-sixth of January onwards. Because it will be a lot easier for you guys to interact with us, it will be a lot easier for us to interact with you. Also, uh-
Hey, Fred's got something ahead, and you're done.
Also, uh-
This is not that cute.
The, the presidential thing will, uh, the reelections will happen the twenty-sixth of February, so basically, we will have from the twenty-sixth of January a month of zero point four, uh- Uh, I'm pretty sure it will happen in that time. I was informed of this, uh, recently, I believe, but don't, don't write, worry on it.
When? Did you say?
Please, please stop. Yeah.
And maybe we can have, uh, maybe we can have an election, maybe five people vote on.
Twenty-six? Did you say the twenty-six?
Anyway, uh, ex- so, uh, uh, excuse me for that, uh, one second. There, there were more than one hundred and thirty-six people that voted this administration into office twice, so if you could please go to the forums, check it out for yourself, because I'm sick and tired of hearing this from people.
What's happening? In-game voting option?
Okay.
No.
I, I, I've gotta go. I've gotta, I've gotta go now, so can I just say one last thing before I go? A cool idea.
Yeah, Jesus.
Uh, okay, Rome wasn't built in a day. I think going over all these crazy things, the, the main thing for me is the traffic stops. There's, we're not having any R P with traffic stops.
But I guess some other ways.
They're adding this to. Okay, the, the best, the best, one, one second.
Dude, I don't mean to fuck you, so nothing from me.
Um, uh, how about, when you're in a car, you can't have a gun in your hand, so you have to, you, when you get out of your car, you never have guns in your hands. Cops come up to us without their tasers, so when they're talking to us, we have a chance to get away while you draw your taser. You can't restrain us unless you tell us you're going to restrain us, i.e. turn around, and we can't get our gun out without looking in our backpacks. It just gives us an indication of how things are gonna go down instead of sneaking on each of them. Uh, like, that's what I would be looking at if I was, um, in, in the administration team, trying to, to stop it.
That is a great idea.
Yeah, actually telling somebody to turn around and put their hands behind their back. I think that's a great addition to the, uh, uh, law enforcement R P.
We are expected to keep our weapons holstered, and so we would think the cops have to have their weapons holstered as well.
Yeah, exactly. So, so what I mean is if.
You can go up and be out without doing like an animation. I will be on the ground when you still do your animation, and I'm all like, I don't even know what happened.
Yeah, exactly. So if, if we can't get out of your car, if we can't get out of cars with guns, no, no, but if you say, if you, if you make.
You can't. You can't scroll, if you, if you.
Yeah. Yeah, but what I mean is, if, if we put in our backpacks or put in our cars, then when we get out of the car, there's no way, when we get out of the car, we can have our feeder.
Hey, man, good for you, man. I don't mean to interrupt you right now, man. That's a great idea, but we're not.
Nah, anyway, I'm animating.
Do you have water?
God, oh, sorry, God. Hey, uh. Control pad.
Fun, hey.
Okay, uh, can I, can I add a little more thing real quick? Hey, uh, we're always right on our rights, right? That's mandatory, uh, and we're afforded a lawyer. Okay, so this is really important to me. Um, I kinda feel like it would actually reduce, uh, crimes if, when we were arrested and we were afforded a lawyer, one was actually afforded to us if we can, if we couldn't get one on our own. And if we actually had a ju- judicial system set up where, you know, we had, uh, we had a way of, and I don't think this is even possible, but if we had a judge and a jury and actually R P'd it, you know? If there was.
But that, that's, that's actually, yeah, it's actually, it seems impossible, but it's actually being told us right now, but I'm not gonna promise anything.
We, we do have judges.
I, I honestly.
We have agents of people on the server, it's impossible.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. I understand that. I, I, but if we're at least, if they're like a cop, uh, there's always cops on, on the servers, ninety-nine percent of the time. If, if we had a lawyer, if you guys had a lawyer that was available for us to actually tell them our story without automatically getting thrown in prison with six hours, you know? Uh, if, and maybe even if, if some, if the civilians could get their own lawyer somehow, they didn't actually have to have a title, you know, if it was R P'd correctly and, and whatnot. I, I don't know.
Fred, that's up to you guys. You guys need to meet more lawyers, really. You know, we don't make lawyers, it's civilians that wanna become lawyers.
Yeah.
There's just not enough right now.
Like, there's so many charges that are getting put on you. Whenever you go to prison, most of the times, the cops already dropped fifty percent if you didn't have a lawyer. Be a nice guy, settle in.
I don't know, Fred Cobblestone's got a, got a history of getting fucked over.
Last guy, I think, I gave him a story, I arrested him, go, we're gonna put him in jail. I think he was at prison and they're complying with me, they'd be a nice guy to me. I drop the shortage. We go to the bank, let's say, you're standing in the bank, you shoot one shot towards four officers. I can get you jail time for five hundred minutes, but I would most like to give you like one, two hours max.
Okay, well, my last thought.
You actually went to the website and checked on all the laws we have and checked the time, and you start stacking them up. You shoot an A K in the bank against four officers there. I can, I, uh, the charges is attempted murder on, on four L E Os, illegal weapon, discharging the weapon in the, in the, in, uh, in the town. Did you take any hostage? Uh, maybe two. That's kidnapping twice, and then bank robbery. Maybe you're a convicted felon, then I put another charge on you. And I reduced that to attempted murder on two L E Os, kidnapping and bank robbery, fine. You're like, easy.
What's your point?
Yeah.
With regards to your question about lawyers, Mr. Cobblestone, uh, we're actually working on state lawyers right now, so basically
Yeah.
we are recruiting a lot of lawyers right now into the state, uh, branches themselves. Basically, what would happen?
What the fuck?
What, like, you're sent to jail, you're, you're put into jail, you're given a chance to talk to a lawyer, and I'm pretty sure that with the amount of lawyers that are gonna recruit. And some of the people in my administration actually being lawyers, that there will most likely be a person on the altimes, but I can't guarantee that, of course. Yeah, go ahead. Anyway, this meeting is over by me. Uh, if you wanna stay here and keep talking, bye.